Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the regular meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. It is 7:00 PM, we're right on time. We will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Rozati. After that, if you would remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or meditation, please rise. All right, Mr. Anderson, roll call please.
And just for the record, there are four commissioners seated right now. So Commissioner Holtz, Commissioner Hing, Commissioner Rozati, and Chairman Redholtz.
And next item is approval of minutes for our meeting of December 12th. Does any commissioner have any changes to make on that? Nope. Seeing none, those minutes will be approved as presented. Next item on our agenda is number two, which is the consent calendar. There appears to be one item on that consent calendar. As our director steps away, we will wait for him to return to talk about the item. Consent calendar item, the only item on there?
Yes, consent calendar item. We have one item, and that is a request for an extension of time for a precise plan and conditional use permit and variance for the construction of a roughly 78,000 square foot public storage facility, which was approved, I believe, in 2015. Really, there was not much activity for the first couple of years, but I can guarantee you, over the last year, there's been a lot of activity. The applicant, who is named Peter Nora, has been very diligent. They are very, very close to getting permits. I believe they've gotten approvals, at least from planning. I think they maybe got approvals for grading from everyone. So they're very close to pulling permits, they just haven't done it yet. And so this would be their third and last one-year extension. If they were to not pull permits by the end of this year, then they would have to go back to a public hearing process. But it seems likely they're gonna... They called me today to see if everything was on track, so I believe they will be pulling permits within the next 30 days. And that's the only thing on consent.
For the record, this is a new owner. This is not the original applicant.
That's correct.
So this is a new individual who apparently is coming in with a can-do attitude to finish this and build basically the same project that was approved, a two-story storage facility.
Correct.
Yeah. Any comment on this, or discussion?
I had a question. So what... I wasn't on the commission when this previously came up, but what was the reason for it being delayed two years?
Well, that is not unusual for it to be delayed at least a year. Actually, since that time, actually last year, we changed the code so they have two-year approval instead of one. And then they have two one-year extensions. Because in our experience, my experience, they usually take longer than a year to get a permit anyway, just because of the amount of work it does on that size of a project. There's a lot of financing that goes in, there's a... The plans end up being, you know, they're, I don't know, a couple hundred sets sheets that somebody is drafting, right? So all that takes a lot of time. That's just the building plans. The grading plans are another whole different set. I think this story, though, is that the original applicant sort of wasn't in a hurry to get it done and then decided to sell it, and then the seller now is in a hurry. And hurry is maybe the wrong word. They're on the ball, they're moving forward.
Okay.
So there wasn't much movement until about a year ago, and then they've been moving very fast over this last year to get everything done.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add, several years ago, you know, these kind of extensions would come through and it would just be on our agenda, and we asked for reasons. I don't know if you recall that, we asked for reasons. So there'll always be, you know, the letter of request for an extension, and it would have the reason. Usually it's financial or delays in, you know, paperwork, but it's usually financial, where they need more time to get everything together. But this is the last one. I mean, if they don't do it this time, they gotta start all over again. So without any further discussion, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Need a roll call?
No, we can do it voice vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, passes 4-0. Thank you. All right. Next is the oral communications time, the public comment. This is the time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on the agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. I have no cards for oral communication. Do I? Okay.
These are all for items.
Okay. So if anyone wishes to speak to us on a non-agendized item, now would be the time. If not, we will close the public comment and move on. Seeing none, we will move on, thank you. Next item is item number three. This is a public hearing, conditional use permit number 18-10 categorical exemption. The applicant is Alex Fei-Yi, I hope I'm pronouncing that properly, for Huray Montessori Preschool of West Covina at 136 South Bandy Avenue. Mr. Anderson, the staff report please, and whom shall be presenting?
Our report is going to be presented by our economic development and housing manager, Paulina Morales.
Thank you, and welcome, Paulina.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Good evening Chairman and fellow planning commissioners. Before you this evening is a request by Huray Montessori Preschool Center to operate a child daycare and learning center at 136 South Bandy Avenue. At this time, only cosmetic improvements to the building are being proposed. The childcare center is allowed with the approval of a conditional use permit, or CUP. The proposed site, sorry, the proposed site, 136 South Bandy Avenue, is located in the neighborhood behind Glendora Avenue retail shops. The site is zoned multifamily residential, abutting multifamily residential to the south. It is adjacent to multifamily to the west, and there are single-family properties to the east of the site. And then to the north is the service commercial property, which is a dental office building. The site has been operating as a child daycare center since 1995, when the first CUP was approved. The last occupant to operate a child daycare center was Footprints Child Daycare Center that obtained their CUP approval in 2002. In addition, they obtained a precise plan approval to increase the building's square footage by 244 square feet. Footprints Child Daycare Center vacated the site around 2015, and the site has sat vacant since. As the site has been vacant and the use has been inactive for more than six months, the previous CUP approval has expired, and the applicant must obtain approval of a new conditional use permit. The site includes a one-story, 2,100-square-foot building with 1,120 square feet of landscaping and a 3,323-square-foot play area to the south of the property that abuts the multifamily complexes. There are nine parking stalls located to the east of the property, abutting the alley. The building includes four classrooms, five bathrooms, and a kitchen. Huray Montessori Preschool currently operates... Huray Montessori Preschool out of a home in Ascenda Heights and will be opening their first commercial location in West Covina. The applicant is proposing to operate the child daycare center and learning center Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, with the occasional use of the center during the weekends for seminars and workshops specifically associated with the child daycare use. There will be a maximum of 40 children, ranging from six weeks old to six years old, and they will be staffed by a program director, two teachers, two aides, with a total of five staff members. Huray's programming will include a variety of activities for the children, from physical play learning centers, languages, including Spanish and, I believe, Chinese, and naptime, and will provide nutritious lunches and snacks. In order to approve the requested CUP, the city must make the following five findings listed above. The first one, as the site has been previously operated as a child daycare center and as the site is located among multifamily and single-family, the child daycare use meets all the applicable requirements of the multifamily residential zone. It will provide the community with a conveniently located child daycare center. In regard to the second finding, the child daycare use will not be detrimental to the community. The proposed operational hours are more restrictive at the request of the applicant than the previously approved CUP. It will allow only occasional use of the site during the weekends and will allow outdoor play no earlier than 9:00 AM. The site and the proposed use are compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses, which is finding number three. The proposed use will not generate a substantial amount of vehicle or traffic nor alter circulation patterns. And the last finding, allowing the proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan. As the site has previously operated as a child daycare center and the findings are consistent with the zoning and general plan goals, staff is recommending approval of the CUP 18-10. The CUP will be subject to conditions of approval included in the resolution. The following are some of the conditions specific to the operation of the Huray Montessori Preschool. Use of the site for child daycare and learning center, maximum of 40 children, maximum of five staff members, operational hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday, the occasional use of the site for weekend... on weekends from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and limited to seminars and workshops. Use of the outdoor play area no earlier than 9:00 AM, landscaping on the site to be maintained, and the operation shall comply with the noise ordinance. As mentioned previously, the fullest of conditions of approval are in the attached resolution. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer, as well as the applicant Alex Fei-Yi is here.
Thank you, Paulina, very thorough report. Any questions of staff? Nope, seeing none? Oh, we have a question. Commissioner Rozati.
Of the 171 that were contacted through the mailer, did we receive any responses?
I didn't receive any emails or any calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fei-Yi, would you like to come up and tell us about your day school?
For daycare.
Thank you.
At Bandy's Avenue, 136 South Bandy. So I'm very grateful for Paulina and Jeff for their guidance and professionalism in guiding me through the application process. So very happy with the service, and so thank you. I also... I'm doing this because we have been operating a family daycare at Ascenda Heights for closer than 10 years now, and our experience and we feel the need for additional services all around. We get people calling from in the vicinity requesting more additional services which we cannot provide because we are limited at 12 people, 12 kids, and we are always running along waiting lists. So we've been trying to find if there's an opportunity around here that we could, you know, serve the community at a greater scale, which this opportunity came up and we wanted to pursue it. So I would believe that we'll do a great job for this property and serve the community's needs for infant care and also childcare, and we have a great program. My wife, who's going to be the director, she has a master's degree in childhood development. She is a Montessori certified teacher, and she's been doing all the preparation for this opportunity here. So I would believe that she would be more qualified than probably the previous owners before her. And also, we got a letter of support from the property owner, Ms. Quinn Ma, so copy for your records. And may I read the letter?
Yes, please.
So, "Dear members of the West Covina City Planning Commission, I am Quinn Ma, property owner of 136 South Bandy Avenue, West Covina. I wrote this letter to support Ms. Hui Ping Huang to obtain the conditional use permit to use my property as a childcare center. This property is well-suited and configured to operate childcare center. As you may already know, this property was used as a childcare center until 2015. After interviewing multiple potential tenants, I found Ms. Hui Ping Huang to be the most qualified person to operate childcare center based on her education and professional experience. Ms. Huang is also very passionate in the childcare profession to nurture the next generation. Approving the CUP for Ms. Huang to run a childcare center will most certainly be an invaluable asset for the city of West Covina. Respectfully, Quinn Ma, property owner." So I'm here to answer any questions you may have for this application.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant from the commission? No, I just have one... Whoops, Mike, sorry, Mike. I have one quick comment. When I went out there today, there are the nine parking spaces that are there, they're all filled with vehicles.
I know.
And it's a vacant building, so I'm just wondering who's cars?
Neighbors.
Neighbors?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would assume that once you go in there and take it over and your employees are there and others, that those people would get the message that...
Right. They already knew that. We have run into them, and when we just took off the lease a few months ago, there was this broken-down truck, scattering all kinds of crap around it, and I was hunting around who's this truck, right? And then finally I found the owner and he moved it. And then I said that this is private property, you guys should not be parking here anymore, and then, you know, we're going to be opening the daycare center and please be respectful of our space. And they've been doing that, but I guess once we're not there, they're parking again. But I would think that once we started, we post our signs and operations going on, it would... That would go away. And also, you know, because it's vacant for so long, they've been gathering quite a bit of trash around the property. So I've been doing a lot of cleaning up off and on, and I drive by there to clean it up. And there's some minor graffiti there, but that's nothing that a paint job couldn't repair. So we are very excited to get this opportunity and try to clean up the place, and we open the daycare center to serve the community.
Very good. So no other comments for this gentleman? No? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak before or against this item? I have no other cards? Nope. Close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we will go to commission discussion and our motion. Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Rozati.
How long does this CUP... How long is it good for if we approve it?
A CUP is a land use entitlement that runs with the property, so it lasts as long as a business is operating under its conditions. And once a business goes out... So the previous use, there was a daycare there before, and they went out of business, and they were out of business more than be a year now with the downtown plan. If they're out of business for more than a year, then they lose that and they have to go back and apply for a new CUP.
Okay, so if this business changes ownership, for whatever reason, in a year, would that new ownership have to come for a CUP?
No. As long as they can abide by the conditions of approval. So the number of students, the number of faculty, you know, that kind of thing, as long as those stayed the same, they wouldn't have to come back. Hours of operation...
So approving this could essentially leave it for 20 years?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
And there are situations in the city, I think, that are like that, where the daycare's been operating for that long a time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Seeing as the applicant has experienced running a daycare center before, I think it's great that he's going to move in there, take over that building, and I look forward to success.
Would you like to make a motion, or just...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
And we have a motion to approve the item. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Vice Chair Hing. Any further comment on the motion? No?
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Yes.
We have a... Resolution number, which will be 18-5978. And then, if you're ready, I can do the roll call.
We're ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holtz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hing.
Aye.
Commissioner Rozati.
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0, and these items are final unless appealed to the city council within 10 days. Thank you very much, sir. Good luck. Welcome to West Covina. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Oh, I did want to make a comment, not about the project. I congratulate Tim and hope for the best. I did want to thank Paulina. She kind of stepped up when we were low staff, and her and one of the other staff members in her department agreed to help us out with some projects, so we really appreciate that. I really appreciate that. So, and she's not really feeling the greatest tonight, so we're allowing her to leave even though those exciting things coming next.
Thank you, Paulina. Hope you feel better, and we'll see you again. All right, that concludes our only hearing, public hearing for tonight. We will now move on to non-hearing items. Next item is item number four, which is a planning director's modification, number 17-27, a categorical exemption. The applicant is Gregory Miller for Jack-in-the-Box at 2548 South Azusa Avenue. Mr. Director, whom will be presenting the staff report?
Assistant Planner Renee Aguilar will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Tonight, I will be presenting planning director modification number 17-27. The applicant is requesting an approval of a planning director's modification to allow for the remodel of the exterior of an existing Jack-in-the-Box with a drive-through located on the south side of Amor Road and east of Azusa Avenue. The subject property is located at 2548 South Azusa Avenue and is zoned as C3 heavy commercial, and it is located just south of the Woodside Village Shopping Center. And here is a site map of where it is located. So the existing building is 2,608 square feet, with the request of the facade improvements to the existing restaurant. No additional square footage is proposed to be added. The existing fascia and masonry walls shall be painted for restoration. New windows along the north, south, and west elevations. The new wall shall incorporate a new parapet roof, brick veneer to match the existing masonry, and fiber cement siding. Sign fascia is designed with form corrugated panels with an external illumination, and the signage for the site shall be completed under a separate administrative cemental. And so this is the existing west elevation. This is what you see from a street view. And this is the existing south elevation. Continued existing south elevation towards the parking lot. And this is an existing north and east elevation. And this is what the proposed elevation will look like. That is the north elevation. And the south elevation. And lastly, the east elevation, which is at the rear. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA through Section 15301 existing facilities. Since the project only involves rehabilitation of an existing structure and existing facilities, it is therefore exempt. Planning staff is supportive of the proposed changes to modify the exterior treatment of the existing Jack-in-the-Box restaurant that will provide building articulation and will provide a variety of colors and treatment. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve planning director's modification number 17-27, subject to the conditions included in the staff report. That concludes my presentation for tonight. The... I believe the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, Mr. Miller, would you like to come up and make your pitch?
As you can tell from the presentation, Jack-in-the-Box is going through their entire system and updating all of their stores to the newer decor. This store is what's called a Mark V. It's about a 37, 38-year-old store, and it is definitely showing its age on the outside. So really wanted to try to bring this back up to standards that we are competing with, like the McDonald's across the street, so on and so forth. So that's the main reason. What you didn't see here, we'll also do an interior decor enhancement of the dining room as well.
And the franchise owner has owned it for that length of time?
The franchise owner has had this store for about eight years. So before that, it was corporate.
And is he staying with it?
Yes. Yes.
Any questions of the applicant?
No samples?
I did not bring any samples, sorry. But they're still open.
Yeah, they're open 24 hours.
At 2:00 in the morning, you know, the 99-cent tacos are really good.
There you go. There you go. I guess, and the parking lot, is there anything going to be done with the parking lot?
On the... There's two parking lots that are connected, so they purchased a piece of property that's behind it. That one will get mostly R&amp;R repaired, replaced and repaired, because it is in bad shape. And then the front parking lot, which was the original, we'll address the handicap parking stalls, make those back into concrete instead of asphalt, and then the entire parking lot gets sealed and restriped.
And with an approval, what timeframe are we looking at to get this all?
We are currently looking at a March 4 construction start.
Oh, pretty good.
So, we do have a little issue with the lease extension, but they're working through that. That's why it's pushed to March 4.
Very good. Any other questions for him, or no? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard on this item? Nope. We will close the public comment and move on to commission discussion. Who would like to take the lead on this very controversial item?
I'll motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Rozati. Is there a second? Do you need numbers, right?
We don't... I'm sorry, this is a planning director's mod...
Right.
Wow. Planning director's modification, probably one of your last planning director's modifications, maybe the last. But in those, there's no resolution, the conditions are in the staff report, so it's just a motion, and then with the conclusion, we send them a letter with the conditions on it.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. With that, I just want to make a comment. That is my Jack-in-the-Box, in that I live in that area, and...
Never mind, I take it back.
And, you know, I appreciate that the store's been there for that many years and that this owner is, you know, stepping up and going to invest in his business, and by doing so, investing in the city. And, you know, it's going to be, I think, a big improvement. And you're right, with the McDonald's, with what they did, and, you know, I mean, that's kind of the trend in the fast food industry, is to keeping the stores fresh. And this Jack-in-the-Box will definitely benefit from that, and so will the patrons and the residents, so thank you for that. And we have a motion and a second, and let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Holtz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hing.
Aye.
Commissioner Rozati.
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Is there an appeal on this, or...
Yes, there would be an appeal.
So there is a 10-day appeal period, and after that, it's a final decision. Thank you very much. Moving along with our record-breaking pace, we have a familiar face in the audience. Item number five is a minor modification, number 18-03 categorical exemption. Applicant Bob Kristoff for BMW Management, which is the Sizzler, at 1100 West West Covina Parkway. Mr. Anderson.
It almost feels like we're for our annual review of the Sizzler restaurant update. So this is a minor modification. A minor modification is a change to a previously approved precise plan. That's the difference between it and what we call a minor site plan review. So that indicates that there is a precise plan that was approved that's still in action, hasn't been acted upon. The existing Sizzler is about 6,000 square feet, it's in West Covina Parkway Park. It's in West, West Covina Parkway Plaza, not too far from here. On August eighth, 2017, the planning commission approved a planning director's modification to put an enclosure on the existing outdoor seating area, improve the parking lot, and upgrade the facade of the building. Later, the planning commission approved on July tenth, 2018, a precise plan, eighteen oh-four, that would modify the exterior of the building and, and provide an addition to the back of the building. So... What we have before us then is a modification to that precise plan. Its location is in the, the urban center zone in the downtown plan, Plaza West Covina. It's surrounded on the south, east, and west by single family and to the north by the mall and the rest of the shopping center. It's a categorical exemption because it's, it's an existing facility and I already talked about the previous approvals. This is the site plan for the site with the north being down, so West Covina Parkway's to, to the bottom of that, that picture. And then here we have the original elevations. So the original elevations are here, the front one is at the top and the west one is on the, on the bottom, so we can toggle back and forth if you'd like, because that's, that's the original ones that were approved with the precise plan. Now these are the proposed ones. So my rough description is they're, they're kind of really making the building one cohesive unit, whereas before it was kind of like they were adding things because that east and west, or the left and right things were kind of the new entry and then the, and then the enclosed patio. So from staff's viewpoints, it's a really, it's a really good design at this point. And we have, not quite as noticeable on these elevations, but at the top you have the rear, which is not really noticeable at all because it's at the back, you don't really see that one. And then the east elevation, which you might get a glimpse of, especially if you park on that side. And this is a proposed, so it, and staff's, I'll put it on this one because I think that's the best one to understand what the view would be. So that's what's being proposed here tonight is, is exterior improvement changes, no changes to the interior, no changes to the seating, no changes to the business operation. It's all just about the facade improvements. And so with that, we, and this is a minor modification, which is, which is akin to a, with sort of the, the child of the planning director's modification. So it has the same setup where the conditions of approval are in the staff report, they're not, there's no need for a resolution, there's no findings for that. So those are before you in the staff report and that would conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions. And we do have the applicant here.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Nope. Mr. Kristoff, would you like to make that long walk to the podium, sir?
I'm Kristoff, BMW Management. Good to see you all again. Welcome. So money talked, so we decided to try and put a little bit more money into it and we got a little bit out of the landlord, so we're trying to use that up. Forstalling the construction a little bit time-wise because of the first quarter of the year being more prevalent as far as business, so we don't want to be closed during the good time of the year. So we've been in plan check now, first, first go around, so we're ready to go back to plan check and hopefully get our, our permits issued soon and move forward probably, I hate to say, probably right after Mother's Day, more than likely, because Mother's Day is one of the biggest Sizzler days of the year. So happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick question for you. The Sizzler in Baldwin Park recently closed. Does, does your, is there same ownership there or?
No.
Different, different? Okay, so, you know, I think timing is good.
Yes.
With this, because with that one gone, people that want to go to Sizzler there, hey, you know, you're gonna, they're gonna have a nice new Sizzler.
Right. In fact, we just remodeled the store in Ontario this last year and a lot of, we had to close down and a lot of the people were going over to West Covina. And so business picked up a little bit and then when Baldwin Park closed down, which was a, I believe that, that was a franchise store as well, but it wasn't owned by us. So I think, I think the timing is good. We don't want to be closed for too long so you can get your all-you-can-eat shrimp.
Exactly. No samples either, right? What the heck? Well, I think from, you know, I hate to say you finally got it right, but it looks like you did.
Let's just hope the owner doesn't change his mind again.
Exactly.
Since money does talk.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Any questions for Mr. Kristoff? Wow. No, okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We'll see you at the grand opening.
Thank you.
Same deal as last time, right? Any discussion on this? Doesn't sound like it. Anybody want to jump in with a motion or?
I'll motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Rosati. I'll go ahead in a second. And there's no numbers or anything, right? So?
No, no numbers.
Okay, so we just need a roll?
Commissioner Holtz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hing.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosati.
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz.
Aye. Pass it four-zero and again, it's final unless appealed to the City Council within ten days. Thank you, Bob. Good luck.
Yep. Wow. Chairman does a good job. Look how fast we're going through this. We are now at the point of a continuation of oral communications. I don't see either one of our two people down here leaping to the mic, so I guess we will conclude that there are no more oral communications to be heard. Next would be commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Any commissioner wish to enlighten us with some comments? Wow, no. All right.
I, I would like to note that there is an event this Saturday at the West Covina Plaza. It is a Get Fit 5K. You don't have to run it, you can stroll it. I'm a stroller. But yeah, I would encourage anyone who's out there that is looking to get involved to, to come out and support the, the event.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Rosati. That's good information. Anyone else wish to add anything? Nope. Oh my, okay. Planning director's report.
We have forthcoming for the next couple of meetings. We, we have items for February twelfth. We don't know about the twenty-sixth at this point, but keep your agenda open on the twelfth because we do have some items. You may have noticed, especially you've been on for a while, that the agenda looks different. We did get a new agenda building program. It's really meant for electronic viewing, that's what, so it's a little awkward and some of the things, we're still trying to work through the kinks, so bear with us. You may have noticed the vicinity map wasn't in the report, it was attached because we couldn't, I'm not sure there's a way to get it in the report without causing problems. We haven't been able to figure that out at least. And another thing that I was talking to the chairman about today was that, you know, we didn't have any author on there, which I think we probably should do something about that for your guys' sake as we move forward. So there, we'll, we'll hopefully get a little bit better at it as we, as we move forward and we'll try to work out the kinks with, with the, the provider, but bear with us. And, and, you know, staff is, we're at the, we're, we're a low ebb right now, so you're looking, don't pay attention to him for the moment, but you're looking at the planning department, right? You know, I'm the planning department. So, but Renee has been offered the job, so he, actually he'll start with us next week, although he has been working for us as a consultant for the past month or so. So Renee, we have two other offers out, so hopefully by the end of February, we're going to have three planners beside myself and that will allow us to move forward. We've had a lot of help and Paulina and, and her crew have been very helpful as we've moved forward and we've had some, and our interns have been very valuable over the last month, so I want to give them a shout out as well. And, you know, I'll, I'll look forward to us ending all of our planning commissions by seven forty-five as we go through the year. That's all I have.
And no city council action?
No, no city council action.
Congratulations, Renee.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, it looks like we're done. Motion to adjourn? So moved, we're done. Thank you, everyone, and good night out there in TV land.